Yeah.
We look at, we use them, we look at that or?
Oh, no, I don't, but we did something, I don't know. I think we just did.
Yeah, these were, these were just, uh.
Yeah, no, I, I, I.
We were first wondering if we're using.
On their bio, on their needs and stuff, yeah.
Doomsday. Whatever, that is legal, that is legal.
Yeah, um, I talked to Tammy about that and she kinda, she said it works, but you know, she said it. I don't know. She said, that's not a thing.
Yeah, and she was, she said it was a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
You know, we changed.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find them, right? Yeah, that's it, yeah.
I was just wondering.
No, we did, well, and that's the highlight of what we do. She didn't say, um, she doesn't have a. Yeah. You got the, I, I got it on in.
All right, it's five thirty, I'd like to call this meeting into order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, I get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Dan, I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Uh, would anyone like to speak at open forum? If so, please come forward. Name, address, keep it to under three minutes, please.
Deborah Orson, six hundred, Juliet Street. Um, a couple of questions I had with Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two, is the administrative cost deducted from the investment money? And also, why is the city paying a bill for child support garnishments in Minnesota Department of Human Services? Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anyone else to speak at open forum? All right, hearing none, is Amanda here? I see you behind that guy, I didn't see you there, sorry. Amanda Oltow, economic partnership.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Elton Paul, um, did we?
The one that they have to.
Yeah, do we have to that one?
Yeah, sorry.
So last, um, at your last meeting, um, we had a presentation on the, on the CP program, um, for the city of Foley. And Elisa has the application and the, the application and, um. Agreement. Um, further consideration, anything, did you have any questions on it?
It's pretty standard agreement, if I'm correct, yeah.
Pretty simple, yeah. So I'm just, um, if you have no questions, I'm just looking for a motion to approve, uh, sort of, I'm sorry, the resolution, any agreement and application.
I make motion.
I'll second it.
So is this in our consent agenda or not?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded to approve the.
MCPP?
Okay. And, oh, there it is, MCPP agreement, any further discussion? Hearing none, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Ah, there we go, sorry about that. Great, thank you. Um, I think Sarah will, uh, pull up my presentation on the housing study. I wanted to take a little bit of time this evening to kind of run through the housing study presentation. Um, some of you may have already seen the presentation, um, at a chamber meeting or at our public event. But I just wanted to kind of run through it again and then also spend a little bit more time on the recommendations, kind of towards the end of the presentation. Um, did they all get that in their packet as well, Sarah? Okay, great, so you had a little bit of time to kind of run through it. Um, so I'll just kind of give you an overview real quick. Um, the, the goal of the housing study was really, um, discussed and talked about in, um, late two thousand and twenty-one. And really to understand what the, uh, current supply of housing is in our county, in our communities, in each one of our communities. And then what the future demand of housing is, um, looking forward five, ten years, right? And it helps us better plan as communities and as a county, um, for hu- for housing. Um, and also, you know, it's a, it's a tool, this housing study is a tool for us as well. So that, um, you know, when, as we're working on citing new businesses in our community, um, some of the things that they talk about is, you know, what do you have for, for workers, right? What do you have for housing? Um, are you able to sup- supply enough workers to meet our needs, right? So we have to be able to understand, um, housing as well as economic development and how them two play together. Um, so that was a discussion we haven't had in late twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two is when we started, um, working on, uh, working with Maxfield Research. Um, they are a very well-known, uh, research company, uh, across the country, really. Um, but they do a lot of work here in Minnesota, they're based in Minnesota. And I've used them several times on, in different communities that I've worked on, and they do an excellent job. Um, the full study is available on our website at BentonPartnership dot org, um, on the housing study tab. Uh, and, uh, you'll see, the study is over two hundred and forty-some pages. It's a very lengthy study, but it's very detailed, and that's what we were looking for. Um, so really just to understand the, the current supply of housing, what the future demand looks like. Um, we looked at, uh, what our short, short-term and long-term housing study needs are. Um, we really, um, hammered down on all of the data that we were able to obtain from all of our community partners, our city partners. Um, and, and the county itself, and just to, to hone in on what actually is going on. So our first presentation was on, uh, May twenty-fourth of, of this last year, that's okay. Um, so May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three is when we did a public presentation on the study itself and that, and then we were delivered the final report shortly after that. So when we looked at the housing study, we had to break it apart because we, Benton County is a huge county, right? Like, we have, um, a lot of different things going on in our county. Uh, we wanted to break apart the housing study into different submarkets, so we could better analyze each individual submarket. These submarkets, um, were developed, uh, after convers- many different conversations with our city partners and our county. Um, trying to break them to be a little bit more manageable sections within the study itself. So we have six submarkets that we came up with. Um, we'll, we have seven, um, uh, cities, twelve townships, and, um, really nineteen geographies, right? But our submarkets are the Foley submarket, um, our northeast submarket, uh, our Rice submarket, Sock Rapids submarket, southeast submarket, and our St. Cloud submarket. Uh, so one of the things that we have to understand is where our population is, where it's trending, where it's growing, and what it's gonna look like in the next, um, few years. So we can see that our population is, is slow, um, and actually receding a l- slightly over the next few years. If you can go ahead, it's just slowly growing. And our, the main age group within our county, we're a fairly older, um, cohort, uh, so seventy-five to eighty-four years of age. Um, so it's overwhelmingly the sixty-five-plus population within our submarket.
Go back one, please.
Sure.
One more?
No.
Do you have?
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's sixty-five to seventy-four, if it's twenty percent and sixty percent and twenty percent, that's a hundred percent, if you add those three up. Or you're just saying? If you take the bottom three and add them up, or what's that?
Eh, percentage-wise. So, um, sixty percent of.
Growth.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I missed, I understand now.
Yep. And then, um, two-thirds of the growth is slated for the Sock Rapids submarket, which isn't surprising because they are the largest, um, city in our county. And, um, again, households, um, household growth by submarket, again, you could see Sock Rapids, um, they're, uh, quite, uh, prominent over the other communities. But, you know, Foley is there and we are growing, and, um, they're, they do anticipate, uh, more household growth over, um, through twenty thirty-five. Um, and then, this was really interesting to me when we, you know, took a look at the study and studied, you know, the population, we studied, um, different age groups. And, um, whether or not they're, you know, they're living with people or they're living alone. Um, household growth is highest and among those living alone in Benton County. Median incomes, this is another thing that I thought was really interesting. Um, median incomes really vary between different submarkets. Um, in this diagram, I don't know if it, are you able to zoom in a little bit? Kind of hard, but I. Nope, okay, sorry about that. But the southeast submarket, I believe that's, um, my eyes are good.
Ninety thousand, five fifty-five.
Nine, ninety thousand, five fifty-five, so that is, um, out of all the submarkets, that southeast submarket is predominantly the, the submarket that has the highest median income across the county.
The whole area.
Yep, yep. Um, and then you can kind of look at the median income comparisons between the counties, so Benton County is at sixty-five thousand, um, Stearns is just over seventy-one. Um, Sherburne higher than all of the others, uh, at a hundred and two thousand is their median income. And then our St. Cloud, um, metro service area is at seventy thousand. And the state of Minnesota, if we're comparing the median income to the state, we're looking at eighty-one thousand, um, for median income, and that, those are from twenty twenty-two.
Would, would you say that that graph there is a good indication of, uh, how much it costs to live in other counties?
Um.
Because you couldn't live.
Not necessarily, because we're just talking median incomes, so that's, you know, what they're bringing in for, uh, household income. Uh, cost of living is, it's a little bit, it's a different, um, calculation. Because, for example, in Stearns and the St. Cloud metro area, um, they could have higher median incomes, but maybe the cost of living is a little bit lower than, you know, say a Sherburne County, but still higher incomes. Um, homeownership rates, this is really interesting as well, you can see the, um, the homeownership rates, so the owner versus rental owner. Uh, ownership rates are the, the red, indicated by red, renters, um, are the blue. So you could see, we were talking about that southeast market, that green shaded area, primarily owner-occupied dwelling units there. Um, in the Foley submarket, again, uh, predominantly owner-occupied submarket. Uh, this is also very interesting because, um, Benton County is both a job exporter and importer, and what that means is this graph shows, um, or this chart shows how many people live and work in the county and how many people are coming into the county versus how many people are, live in the county are going outside for work. So you could see on this graph, or this chart, that there's five thousand three hundred and twelve, um, folks that are employed, but work in, and that live and work in the county, so that's that circle. Um, the darker green represents the people that are coming into the county to work, and that's at twelve thousand nine sixty-four. And then the light, lighter shade, shade green, um, shows the people that live in the county that, but are, um, outside, are working outside of the county. And then you can kind of see, we, you know, we also looked at, you know, what the average weekly annual wage is, um, key industry sectors, um, for these jobs. Um, and we also know by looking at this chart that forty-six percent of the residents actually leave the county for employment. And thirty, oh, sorry, thirty-eight percent of Benton County workers are employed in St. Cloud. Um, twenty-four percent of those county workers, um, commute twenty-five miles or greater, so you can kind of see the radius there as well. Unemployment rate, um, mirrors Minnesota, this is, these are a little bit older, um, numbers, a few months ago, but I think the unemployment rate was, I want to say it was like two point seven percent last time I looked. Um, it's, we have very, very low unemployment, but again, it's no, not undifferent than any other community in the state of Minnesota. Um, so now we're just gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about, um, um, housing and the demand for housing. So we, we're looking at housing, housing construction activity, um, over the course of, um, several years, from two thousand and ten to two, twenty twenty-one, so just this last year. Um, housing construction activity in the county is averaged a hundred and thirty units per year. Um, some years, as you can see, are, uh, more units than others, but seventy-six of those hundred and thirty are single-family units. Forty-nine of those are multifamily units, um, per year that are being developed. Fifty-nine percent of the development in the cu- in the county is single-family. And, um, there has been an uptick in development from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. Uh, and of course, the, most of the permit activity is in Sock Rapids at this point. And I mentioned, uh, or I may, I might have mentioned this, but, uh, we ha- we are seeing extremely low rental housing vacancies across the county. Um, overall, there are three thousand six hundred and twenty-six units. We have a five, uh, one point five percent vacancy rate, and where we see equilibrium is typically around five percent. So we are very low, um, we have very low vacancies. Uh, forty-eight percent on rental inventory are located in the Sock Rapids submarket. Um, our market rate units, um, so this, so the overall units break it out between affordable and subsidized and market rate. Um, you can see in market rate, so that's your, uh, apartments, your multifamily projects, um, that are actually, um, that you're paying, um, you don't have a subsidized rate that you're paying. So market rate are just, is, is what the market is paying. So we have three thousand three hundred and seventy-five units in the county, um, at a one point six percent vacancy rate, very low again. Um, and our average monthly rents, um, that we're seeing, again, this is county-wide, so you have to take in account that in some of our submarkets, we're gonna see lower rents versus in some of the other submarkets are gonna be higher, so this is taking an average of all of them. Um, our average monthly rent is eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, um, per, um, per month. And that kind of equates to, you know, per bedroom, we're looking at seven twenty-three per, for a one-bedroom, eight seventy-five for a two-bedroom, and just over a thousand for a three-bedroom. Um, you know, I was talking to a developer that was, that had some interest in, I'll just kind of put this in perspective. So a developer that had some interest in potentially developing, um, an apartment complex in our county. And in order for them to make their numbers work, and, um, they needed to have a two-bedroom rent at thirteen hundred a month minimum. Minimum. So we are very low in rents, and that's what's, that's also the driving factor of, um, attracting developers into our area. Because if they're looking at these rents and they can only get eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars a month, or, uh, you know, a thousand thirty-eight dollars for a three-bedroom, for example. And they need a minimum of thirteen hundred for a two-bedroom, um, it's really hard to make those numbers work on a performa. Um, and then we look at affordable and subsidized units across the county, um, zero percent vacancy rate, all of them are filled.
I have a question, Amanda.
Yeah.
Um, as we look at growing and potential projects, is there a suggested balance of how much you do subsidize versus unsubsidize? Because if we have zero vacancy, I, one thing I worry is how do you, um, have housing for all different job levels and all different, um, you know, income levels? I guess, is there a formula or, or any recommendation on that, if we're considering proposals?
Um, I, I'll get to that at kind of the end, we'll talk a little bit about TIF and how that plays in, um, because ultimately you can gonna see that there's gonna be, there's gonna be a need for some sort of assistance to even attract a developer into our county, because they can't get the rents to make the project work, as you can see. Um, but I will talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind waiting, um. Okay, oh, if you can go back one, I just wanted to reiterate, um, that five percent vacancy is that market equilibrium that I've been talking about. Um, and we're well below that, we need to be at a five percent vacancy rate, just to, um, have enough housing units across the board for different, um, um, different types of, uh, product types.
When you say developers need assistance, where do you, what assistance? What does that mean?
I'll talk about it at the end, um, just because it's, it's a little bit more complicated than just saying that they need assistance, right? So there's programs, specific programs for stuff like that, and I'll talk about it at the end. Um, so late, low vacancy rates a- across the county, you can kind of see where Foley lies. You have zero, um, vacancy here in Foley, uh, and in St. Cloud, it's two point seven. But again, that's across all different product types. Go ahead and switch it to the next slide. Uh, we have a lot of older housing stock in our county, um, homes that are built in the nineteen eighties, um, need a lot of work and improvement in order for them to be, um, continue to be habitable, right? So we, we do have a lot of older housing stock, and they just keep on getting older every year. So, um, improving that older housing stock is absolutely vital to keep the, um, affordability in our county. Uh, single-family rentals dominates, uh, smaller submarkets, as you can see, um, a single-family rental meaning homes, right? Renting out an entire home. Um, so in Foley, thirty-four point five percent, um, of your single, uh, single-family attached and detached, um, are being rented. And then, in the northeast submarket, um, eighty-six point six percent of those are rentals, single-family rentals. Um, Sock Rapids, nine point seven percent, I mean, it just, you know, you kind of see that the smaller submarkets, they don't have a lot of multifamily housing, right? So that's why the single families dominate some of those smaller submarkets. Um, and then I think somebody in the audience had, had a question about, um, senior housing inventory, um, and then just kind of how we break it apart across different product types. Because senior housing isn't just senior housing, you have assisted living, you have memory care, you have, um, independent living, you have a number of different types of products. But when we talk about senior inventory, we talk about, um, all of those units, all those types of units. So there are nine hundred and thirty-nine units or fourteen properties in the county, six point two percent overall vacancy rate. Um, seventy-seven percent, again, are located in the Sock Rapids submarket. But you can see, um, the acronyms are, um, kind of laid out there, it's kind of hard to see, but, um, IL is independent living. Um, assisted living is AL, memory care is MC, um, affordable, assisted living is like the AA stuff, so. I think that's subsidized. Um, so you can kind of see the senior housing by service level in the county, and the vacant, I think in the vacancy rates. Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, median resale price in the Benton County com- in comparison to other communities, um, certainly in Sherburne County, um, the median resale price is much higher than Benton County or Sherburne, or I'm sorry, or Stearns or Saint, or the St. Cloud metro. Um, you could see where Benton County is, um, on our median resale prices, and I think we're at, um, just to, I think it was like two hundred and seventy or two hundred and eighty thousand there um, in twenty twenty-two, and I think I actually have the next nu- the number on the next slide. So home prices are up eleven percent annually since twenty twenty. Um, and, let's see, Foley submarket, is that two fifty? My eyes are.
Two fifty-eight.
Two fifty-eight, nine fifty, so two hundred and sixty thousand roughly, um, in the Foley submarket. That was the median resale price in twenty twenty-two. Um, where you can see in the northeast submarket, you know, in comparison to all these other submarkets, the southeast submarket, much higher, of course. Um, but you can kind of see where that lies, and in two thousand and fifteen, your average price was a hundred and forty thousand. Right? Um, in twenty twenty-two, we took a look at, um, the number of resales, um, between two hundred thousand and three hundred thousand in the county. And, um, then, the majority of the resales, forty, um, forty-six percent of those resales were between tho- those numbers, so. Um, we actually had a hundred and forty-six sales in twenty twenty-two. Limited for-sale inventory, so homes are selling quickly, we can all attest to that, anything that is on the market isn't on there for very long. Um, in January of twenty twenty-three, you could see that we had seventy-seven active listings, no multifamily listings. Um, the average price was going for three hundred and twenty thousand, your median sale price was three hundred and ten. And sixty-two percent of those, um, homes were located in the St. Cloud and Sock Rapids submarkets. Average per square foot, a hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, in a, in the study, we also, I also had Maxfield take a look at what our lot inventory, um, is, and then how many lots are necessarily, I mean, are going to be needed um, in the future, if we want to continue, you know, focusing on housing. Excuse me. And, um, in twenty twenty-two, we had, um, there's three, three hundred and thirty vacant locks, lots, and twenty-two active subdivisions. Nearly sixty-five percent of those were in the St. Cloud submarket. Um, there was no new platted lots in Foley, in northeast, southeast, or, or, I'm sorry, or the southeast submarkets, there were new, no new lots platted. Um, the new construction market really focuses on build a su- build a suit. Um, there hasn't been really a lot of production builders in our county, um, to build, you know, new homes. Uh, few builders will construct spec homes, and spec homes are, um, building a, building a home, um, you know, for sale, but they, the builder holds on to that for sale. Um, so they're, they have it basically in their inventory. Uh, the new product targets entry level to move up or executive buyers. And all these, uh, detached single-family ho- homes, um, or they're split-level dominated homes, with an average price of three hundred and forty-three thousand a square foot. Or, I'm sorry, uh, three hundred and forty-three thousand, um, average price in our county. Interest rates are rising, but, um, we're hearing that they're coming down, hopefully this year with a couple, um, rate decreases. Uh, we really hope for that, because that is really what is, uh, holding up a lot of people from buying new. A lot of people are actually improving their existing homes, but it, um, puts a, a huge struggle on any new development in our county, is those interest rates. So this is where we, um, I want to talk a little bit about, um, first of all, do you have any questions on the, the demographics? That you could think of? There, there's many more. There, there's many more, many more slides and data in our study alone. So if you have any specific questions, you'll probably be able to find it in the study itself. But now we kind of want to look at what our recommendations are, what our demand looks like in the next few years. So we, that study showed that we have a demand for thirty-eight hundred housing units through twenty thirty-five. And thirty-eight housing, thirty-eight hundred housing units means housing units of all different product types. Whether that's senior, that's market rate, that's, you know, that's single-family, that's multifamily, all across the board, okay? So we have a demand for thirty-eight hundred units. And it's broken out by for-sale, general occupancy rental, and senior. And then we broke it out in more detail by each individual submarket. This, this slide might be a little bit hard to see on the screen, but the different colors represents different things. So the blue represents for-sale, the pink or the red represents renter, and then the green represents senior. So you can kind of see that, nope, that's all right. You can just kind of see what the demand is over the course of the next few years by the different submarkets and what product type are needed in those submarkets. This is coming directly from the executive summary, and this actually breaks out the demand based on the different product types for general occupancy. That's market rate rental, we need seven hundred and thirty-eight units, affordable rental, three hundred and forty units, subsidized rental, two hundred and twenty units, for-sale, single-family, eight hundred and fourteen, is that right? And then for-sale multifamily, three hundred and fifty. Am my eyes good? All right. Don't need glasses anytime soon. So in addition to that, then we break it down by senior, senior housing, whether that's active adult, active adult market rate, active adult affordable, active adult subsidized, independent living, assisted living, and memory care. So we break out all of those and all of that totals just over thirty-eight hundred units. So we get in the fun stuff. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the recommendations from the study to help alleviate costs associated with single-family developments, multifamily developments, or senior living projects, right? So here are, there's multiple different strategies. I'll kind of go through each one a little bit more individuals. I kind of handpick some that we could talk through in the next slides. But overall, you know, cities can play a huge part, the county can play a huge part in being a little bit more flexible when it comes to housing. And one of those flexibilities is to relax some zoning requirements, allow higher density, lot size, parking. Parking is huge. And also the regulatory fees, so fees associated with the development of a new single-family home or a multifamily housing project. Fee reductions, so entitlement permits, impacts, environmental impacts, fast-tracking permitting, tax evasion and tax increment financing, which is a tool for housing, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail. And then, you know, maybe establishing housing trust or other housing programs, land acquisition contributions, infill sites, you know, purchasing some of those, opportunity zone, tax breaks, accessory dwelling units. I talk a lot about this because I think there's a huge demand for these across the country. Tiny homes, multi-generational homes, and then different financing instruments. You approved one tonight, which is the next step, you know, is that, that MCC, I'm sorry, MCPP program, which offers, you know, down payment assistance and, you know, loans for down payment assistance. So, and then, you know, different types of loan products. And then, of course, public-private partnerships, that's working with our city partners, our county partners, our employers. Just kind of working with them in a number of different ways by having them contribute to the housing issue that we have in our county. Improving productivity, we talk a little bit about modular housing, pre-bab housing. It's becoming a little bit more popular because it's cheaper. So you're not having to have the larger footprint of a single-family home. So modular housing is being, is a little bit more attractive. Alternative construction materials, there's a lot of generals or general contractors that are exploring different types of materials to help make the end product more affordable. Design innovations, promotion of the trades in the schools, and then, you know, we talk a little bit about reducing lot sizes and stuff like that. So I'll have you talk about some of the different resources. The city has, does the city have HRA? It's, yeah, essentially the council, so it's a little bit dormant. But a lot of communities have local housing and redevelopment authorities. They're allowed by statute to offer certain different programs to preserve existing housing stock. They're allowed to levy dollars to fund some of these different programs. So HRAs are essentially really great tools for a community to use, right? In addition, there's different state organizations that offer communities assistance. The MCPP program is the one that you approved earlier, is established through Minnesota Housing. That's, that's certainly a state tool that we can use. There's also a few cities that offer housing programs across the county administered by the city. There's also other various different programs across the county, across the country that we can model off of. So we can turn to the next slide. So here are some of the recommendations coming straight from the study, we'll kind of go through each one of these. How am I looking on time? Okay, okay. So architectural design services, so this is something that essentially a city or a local government authority could establish. And basically, they partner with local architects to provide design consultation with homeowners. They, the homeowner pays a small fee, sometimes this is subsidized by the community. And essentially, the city or a public entity absorb most of that cost. And there's no income restrictions there. Basically, those architectural design services help, like some of the existing housing stock, some of the older housing stock. Maybe they need to add windows or, you know, flooring, or maybe they need to add a bathroom or add a porch or remodel something, that's, you know, some of those design services could be used to help those homeowners out. So, I mean, not everybody's really savvy about doing remodeling projects in your home. And so that's just something that the local communities could help with. Construction management services, so assisting a homeowner regarding local building codes. Just having somebody, having a point person to talk to that homeowner about, you know, their remodel project or their new construction project. Typically, it's typically provided as a service within the building department. This type of service could also be rolled into various remodeling-related programs. I use this service specifically in the city of Elk River. When we, because we established a rehab loan program for our community. And we had construction management services as a tool for homeowners to tap into. The city absorbed the cost and in, in return, the homeowner was able to utilize some of the services, the contractors, for their remodeling projects. And then they got some assistance in reviewing some of those local codes or they got assistance with working with specific contractors on their project. Central Minnesota Housing Partnership offers this service, so does the Center for Energy and Environment. And we specifically use the Center for Energy and Environment to help administer, administer the program. So it's very interesting, I mean, you can construct it however you want, but that's essentially what that is. Density bonuses, so this is another tool or a recommendation that the housing studies offered. Land is very expensive, especially when you're developing new, new housing product types, right? So multifamily or single-family. Since the cost of land is a significant barrier to affordability, increasing densities can result in lower housing costs by reducing the land cost per unit, right? So just allowing more density in some of your zoning districts oftentimes does the trick, right? Municipalities can offer density bonuses as a way to encourage higher-density residential development while also promoting affordable housing. So offering a little bit of an assistance for utilizing density. Permitting is a huge barrier sometimes for projects, especially multifamily projects because they're so huge and they got a lot of different moving parts to them. Oftentimes, fast-tracking those permitting processes really helps reduce any delays that a developer would have to build a housing development. And, you know, we look at, in this instance, maybe a multifamily housing project, right? Fast-tracking that permitting helps save the developer costs at the end of the day. And they're not having to put that back on to the person who is renting. Typically, no cost of local development or the local government jurisdiction. It's just, you know, reviewing your processes, getting prepared to fast-track some of those permitting. And, and I'm telling you, that is a very, very, very helpful tool for developers. They don't like waiting six months to get a permit to build their project, right? I mean, they want to get this done fast. Historic, historic and historic preservation projects, encouraging residents to preserve historic housing stock in the neighborhood, offering, you know, different loan, loan products through the city, low interest rates. You know, kind of like a, if you want to think about a revolving loan, but for historic properties, the city could establish something like that. And then that helps with them getting their project rehabbed or preserved. And they're not having to utilize some of the high-interest rate tools that the primary lenders have. Any questions on those so far before we move on? I don't want to overwhelm you too much.
I have one question.
Okay.
You know, you keep saying that cities, municipalities could do this, bring up, have extra money here. What if you don't have the money, where do we get it from the state?
So like I said earlier, you know, having a more active HRA could help. You know, you could levy dollars through the HRA, a separate levy from city, the general budget or an EDA, right? So there's different levying options to invest in your community, right? So that is something that could happen locally. There is also different programs at the state that you could tap into. And, you know, or just advertise and have it available. I mean, there's several different rehab loan programs. There's a number of different things through Minnesota Housing and HUD, right? So just having that information available on your website or being able to talk about it to a prospective homeowner that wants to do some renovations, right? Homeowner Improvement Area, so this, this would be like a program to allow a townhome or condo association access to low-interest loans to help finance improvements to communal areas. Again, these are suggestions from all over the state, right? Like, and probably all over the country. These are just different tools that you can start thinking about and, and hashing around. So basically, it's a, it's a loan that would be repaid through fees imposed on the property, usually through property taxes. Typically, a last resort financing tool when associations are unable to obtain traditional financing due to the, to the loss or equity from the real estate market or deferred maintenance on older properties. We're not really seeing a decrease in values in the real estate market right now. So it would, this would probably pertain more to your deferred maintenance. Home building and trade partnerships, so the, you know, communities could partner with local technical college or high schools that offer building trade programs, you know, training those kids or those students to be interested in the trades is really important because we do need those general contractors, we need those, we need folks working in the trades to even improve our existing housing stock, right? We can also utilize those partnerships to, for new housing production. So like your Habitat for Humanity homes, just, you know, bringing, giving them the skills that they need to allow them to partner with some of those technical or high school. Point-of-sale programs, the city could implement a point-of-sale programs. And really what this is, is for your older housing stock or your existing housing stock. This could be a city ordinance requiring an inspection prior to the sale or transfer of residential real estate. The inspection is really intended to prevent adverse conditions and meet minimum building codes. Sellers are essentially responsible for incurring any costs for the inspection. Depending on the community, evaluations are completed by the, either the city or third-party licensed inspectors. I am going to preface this and let you know that this is not necessarily a popular program amongst homeowners. I'll just put it that way. It is something that some cities are utilizing, City of Duluth has something very similar to the point-of-sale program. There's other communities in the metro area that are utilizing a point-of-sale program. And ideally, the, the goal here is to really prevent those issues with the existing homes as you go and sell them. You know, you may have some deferred maintenance that wasn't taken care of with the previous person or the seller that was living there. So they, you know, before they sell it, they need to take care of those items before they sell it to the next person. Thereby, that's preserving the existing housing stock, right? It's not always the most popular thing because that comes with expense. But it is something that some cities are implementing. Housing fair, this is typically a free seminar and advice for homeowners that related to remodeling and home improvement. See that in St. Cloud once in a while, they have it at the convention center, right? Most housing fairs offer educational seminars, ask expert, consulting services. Experts or exhibitors include architects, landscapers, building contractors, different types of home products, inspectors, financial services, among other different things. The other thing the city could do is offer low-interest home energy loans to make energy improvements in their homes. Now, there are some programs offered through the state and through Minnesota Housing or HUD for energy loans. Center for Energy and Environment also has low-interest home energy loans as well. So there are different programs that we could promote as a city to help with that. And another thing is, you know, household and outside maintenance for the elderly. It's called, some people term it as the home program. It's for people over sixty that receive, that could receive homemaker and maintenance services, typically services. Typically, services include housing or house cleaning, grocery shopping, yard work, lawn care, other miscellaneous requests, just kind of upkeeping your exterior and interior of your home. So that is something, you know, you think about the city offering all of these programs. It's obviously not feasible to have the city offer every single one of these programs, right? It's kind of a pick and choose, try a few things here and there, see how things work, progress the program, that sort of thing. Maybe some of these things are already offered by nonprofits, you know, and maybe it's something that the city can partner with the nonprofits to maybe implement a program like this, right? Infill lots, this is another really, I mean, it's a great tool is to, for the city or the HRA to purchase the blighted properties or substandard units from willing sellers. And I will highlight willing sellers. This is, you know, if there's a, maybe a property within the city that, you know, you know is coming up for sale in the future, or you hear it is, you know, the city could start negotiating with that potential seller and purchase that property, you know, essentially take it down and then offer it for sale for a developer to build something different there, right? Or future purchases can be, purchasers can be builders. It doesn't necessarily have to be the city or the future owner occupant who has a contract with a builder. So this is another tool that either the city or, you know, working with local developers can utilize the purchase of infill lots and basically taking down a substandard building and building something new. Land banking is kind of similar where you're acquiring land with the purpose of redeveloping or developing that parcel of land at a later date. I know that the city has some land that they're banking right now. This is a tool that's already being used, but maybe you want to explore this tool a little bit further. This, you know, after a certain holding period, the land can be sold to developer. The developer can develop it with a specific purpose. Maybe it's developing market-rate housing or affordable housing, but you could utilize a tool like that. Land trust is, you know, another tool where you're utilizing a long-term ninety-nine-year ground lease. Basically, the housing is affordable because you're not having to deal with the cost of the land, right? It's on lease, it's typically owned by a nonprofit. It's subject to income guidelines, income limits, and it's really, those land trusts are targeted for workforce families. If the family chooses to sell their home at a later date, the selling price is lowered and the land is excluded, is typically lower, because the land price is excluded. So that's just, a lot of communities are establishing land trusts for this specific purpose, for workforce housing. And, you know, the study talks a little bit about, you know, incentivizing folks where they live. So if they're living within the city limits, maybe it's an incentive program designed to promote home ownership in the community where the employers work. Maybe the city provides a grant, or maybe the employer provides a grant to eligible folks that are looking to purchase a home near their workplace. And employers can also contribute to match a city's contribution. Participants must obtain a first mortgage through the participating lenders. A grant can be allocated towards down payment assistance, closing costs, gap financing, things of that nature. And then restrictions, of course, can be length of employment, income, homebuyer education. So you could really kind of structure the program how you want. Realtor forums, those are really great, because they're typically administered by the city in partnerships with the local schools or local Realtor organizations. They inform Realtors about the school district news, current development projects, other marketing factors. We did this in Elk River all the time. Every year, we did a Realtor forum. It was really great, because for the Realtors especially, because they got their CE credits, continuing education credits as part of attending that forum. And we had a lot of interest from Realtors to kind of work in the area because of that Realtor forum. So it was really great and not a huge cost to put one of those on. Remodeling tours, city-driven home remodeling tour intended to promote the enhancement of housing stock through home renovations or additions. Homeowners basically open up their home to the public, highlighting some home improvements to kind of get people excited about doing home improvements to their existing homes. Rental collaboration, really organizing regular meetings with owners, property managers, other stakeholders that deals specifically within the housing realm. Being collaborative and informational meetings that include city staff and updates on economic development and real estate development, all those types of things. So just getting everybody together just to kind of understand what's going on in our community. Rent-to-own, income-eligible families rent for a specific length of time with the end goal of buying a home. You know, allowing that, the HRA can, this would be an HRA type of deal where the HRA would save a portion of the monthly rent, which would be allocated for the down payment of a future house. Shallow rent subsidy, this is another HRA program where an HRA could fund a shallow rent subsidy program to provide program participants living in market-rate rentals. A rent subsidy typically about a hundred or three hundred dollars a month. And then we get into the fund stuff, where we talk a little bit about tax abatement and tax increment financing. I'm going to spare you all the details on both of those programs, because they are very complex. But essentially, tax abatement is a really good economic development tool, not only for commercial-industrial types of projects, but also for housing. And really what that is, is it's a reduction in property taxes over a given period of time for the new construction of multifamily homes or larger developments. And it encourages new construction or rehab through property tax incentives. So really, tax abatement is the most flexible of all the tools in economic development. Although, the difference between tax increment financing and tax abatement, and I'll talk a little bit about tax increment financing here, is that you have to get each individual jurisdiction to participate. So if the city and the county and the school district can't just contribute, you have to ask them to contribute, right? A little bit more complicated than that, but that's essentially what tax abatement is. And then tax increment financing, this tool is a little bit more robust tool, because it requires the participation of the city, the county, and the school district. And that's a program that works a little bit like abatement, but essentially, you're capturing the increment on the project that is being developed. So, for example, a single, I'm sorry, a multifamily housing project. So we're looking at an apartment complex being developed in our community. And there's a base value there. And when that project is built and developed, it increases the overall tax capacity of the project and for our community. And it's the increment of the taxes being generated on that property that can be used for an incentive for the developer. So it's a fantastic tool. There's different tax increment financing districts that you can use that tool on. Housing is one of them. And that's where, you know, I think Sarah had the question about utilizing tools or financing tools for housing projects. And for a housing tax increment financing district, you know, there has to be a certain portion of the overall project. Say you have a developer wanting to build a hundred units, forty of those units or forty percent of those units need to be affordable, whereas sixty percent can be market. Or, you know, so it's a forty-sixty rule, I think there's a twenty, I can't remember the other rule, forty-sixty. And then there's another one, too, sixty. Anyways, so there's a couple of different ways that you can structure tax increment financing on housing, specifically multifamily housing and redevelopment projects as well. So you can use tax increment financing on a redevelopment project to build market-rate housing. So redevelopment essentially means you identify an area within your community that needs to be, that needs to be redeveloped. Seventy percent of those structures or those buildings within that area, that defined area, need to be identified as substandard. You take that down, redevelop it into whatever you want, really. I mean, multifamily housing, market-rate, affordable, commercial-industrial, whatever you want, really, for those redevelopment districts. So there's a number of different districts within tax increment financing. It gets really complicated, so I'll spare you for all that, but it is a really, really great tool for housing. And if a developer were to come into our community today and ask to build a multifamily housing project with a combination of affordable and market-rate housing and wanting to use tax increment financing as a tool, you know, to help develop that project, I would hope the city would be, you know, acceptable to something like that, because that is, it is a really great tool. Transfer of Development Rights, really, we don't use a lot of this in the state. Basically, it's a program that shifts the development potential of one site to another site or a different location, even in a different community. They use it a lot on farms or open areas that are being farmed. Basically allows landowners to sever development rights from properties and government-designated low-density areas and sell them to purchasers who want to increase the density of development areas that local governments have selected as higher-density areas. We don't use a lot of that, at least in the state that I'm aware of, but it is a tool that's available. And then the reduction of fees, we talked about this a little bit, but reducing fees that developers pay, including impact fees and utility connection fees, park land dedication fees, any of those fees to help facilitate a development are essentially, are great to have, or at least consider when you're looking at a new project within your community. This can help facilitate affordable housing. Some of the fees could be waived or reduced to pass the cost savings on to the housing consumer. So really, it's just, you know, taking into consideration some of those reductions of fees to help a developer develop a project. That is the end of my slideshow, it was a long one, but I know you guys had the time tonight, and I hope I at least triggered some good thoughts, questions. Maybe you want to muddle on it for a little while, but it's always a, great to really understand some of the tools that are available for housing and just some of the tools in general. I'm not saying that the city has to take on every single one of these tools, but I wanted to provide you with a comprehensive list of tools that are working in other communities so that you can really hone in and, you know, actually just feel it out and see what's right for the city of Foley as we look at increasing the number of households in our community, right? So I'm opening it up to questions.
How many, how many? How many of these processes are, is Sauk Rapids using? A lot of them?
That is a really good question. I was not prepared to answer that one, so I'd have to look at and see what that is. Yeah, no, you're fine. I do know that they have a rehab loan program. I do know that, and it's actually really successful. And basically, it's offering small loans to homeowners to help improve their existing housing stock, right? So it was really successful in Elk River. It's been really successful in Sauk Rapids. I know that they were working with a local lender as a public-private partner for some matching grant dollars or for some matching dollars for that program. So I do know that they're doing that. I also know that, you know, they are open to tax abatement and tax increment financing for housing. Those are the three that I know.
A gentleman had a question earlier with the add-on.
Yeah, when you're talking more about city, it's all related, one question I think.
Yep, tax increment financing, tax abatement. Tax increment financing for housing, it's for mixed-income housing, so affordable and market-rate. So that's the assistance, that's what I'm talking about, the increment. Yeah, and then there's another, yeah, another way of doing it. Yep, and it's all, it's all based on income, right? So it's income-based type of program.
I've heard that there's new programs coming out, out of this year that wasn't included in your last presentation. Have you heard any more about that, if you can expand on it?
Do you know what programs you're specifically talking about?
Not off the top of my head, I don't have that saved email. I specifically asked mortgage owner, company owner, when you were talking about the MCTP program and what his thoughts were on it. And he told me about the new ones that are coming up this year.
Okay, yeah, there's probably a lot of different programs. I mean, housing is a huge, huge deal right now. I mean, we're trying, we're not the only county that is experiencing housing shortage, and there's probably going to be a lot of things coming out in the works. And local housing aid is one of them. And a community of Foley's size would have to specifically apply for it separately. The county actually is receiving, received an allocation this year. They'll be receiving another allocation this following year. But the local housing aid is really, you know, one of those programs that they just kind of came up with to be utilized in your community. And how that's going to be utilized yet, it hasn't been, there's not really any specific rules or anything. It's really up to the community to establish programs to utilize those, that housing aid funds. So that's just one of them I know.
Any other questions? Thank you, Amanda.
Do you want me to follow up with some other stuff if they're using other programs?
I think on your website, it'd be on there, wouldn't it?
Most of the programs, the incentive programs that are listed on my website are geared towards commercial-industrial, but, I mean, there's the housing studies on there. But I can certainly circle back and talk to City of Sauk Rapids and see what else they're doing there.
Sure.
Other than the ones that I know.
Send me an email on that.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Amanda.
Done picking your brain tonight, thank you.
Seven, update on wastewater regionalization project.
Evening, Mayor Council. In closing your packet this evening is pay estimate number fifteen for the improvement project. The pay estimate recommended amount is seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and eighty-five cents to Geislinger and Sons. That represents approximately eighty-six percent of the total contract amount. Maybe just by way of a quick update, a couple of control panels did arrive, so they're looking at mounting those, doing some electrical work there. And then also, work continues in the order control building. So that's really the majority of what's going on within the project right now. They're trying to incorporate products into the project as they're received. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
I don't hear anyone. I'm looking for a motion to approve pay application fifteen.
So moved. Second?
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Council.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jared.
Twenty-twenty-four annual appointments.
Just thinking, yep. Okay, we do have one, um, one change from the packet, and that is regarding the library board term. Um, that individual, because of state statute, the attorney did confirm with me today, they cannot be reappointed. They can continue to serve until a replacement is found. Um, so we just noted that on the appointment list, that they're allowed to remain serving unless, until somebody else comes forward. Other than that, um, anybody that who has been on there or, or seeking reappointment is listed. We do have open positions, um, like we've been experiencing the last couple of years. Um, so if there is anybody that comes forward in the middle of the year, we can, um, always add people as they're interested whenever. So I guess I'll just leave it to any questions or comments? And you can approve them all as one, once you've made any changes.
Any other changes to this? If not, I'd seek a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four annual appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I don't know why we have another mayor's comments. We're just going to skip that one. That goes to the end. Department reports, Katie McMillan, Police Department.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, we'll start with the stat report. For the year total, for twenty-twenty-three, we had four thousand, five hundred and fifteen total calls. In the month of December, we had three hundred and fifty-two. Traffic enforcement was down for the month of December, and our medicals were up. Just some things to look at there. And I also included in your packet the numbers for twenty-twenty-two, just so you can compare and see the increase. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, our total was four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine. So that is a hundred and, we had a hundred and sixteen more calls in twenty-twenty-three than we did in twenty-twenty-two. And just some of the differences, um, in twenty-twenty-three, we had less speed violations, ordinance violations, suspicious activities, and thefts. In twenty-twenty-three, we had more equipment violations, domestics and assaults were up, disturbing the peace, and our animal complaints were up. And in your packet, I also included the bar graphs and the line graph to help show those increases as well. Any questions in reference to that?
Uh, I mean, I wouldn't just say they're increases. They're, I mean, they're practically doubled in equipment violations and disturbing the peace. I mean, incre- it increases, you know, a few here and a few there. It's significant. It's a, it's a significant increase.
Equipment is significant, yes. And then disturbing the peace was up there also, yeah. Disturbing the peace is, um, your loud noise complaints, your just, you know, you know, loud parties or things like that, uh, trespasses, stalking, things like that.
Uh, Chief, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is, uh, under miscellaneous, the alarms, extra patrols, house watches, does that, is that a hindrance for you to do?
Well, that's taking, the alarms are like if we get alarm call, and we have to go and check it out. Um, I know, like, the county, if they have a lot of false alarms, they charge that business for, uh, the false alarms. We do not do that. Um, the extra patrols, um, that is, the officer goes out and makes sure that, you know, we do extra patrol around there. So it does add to our, our daily duties.
Is it a hindrance?
It's our job.
Okay.
You know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't know, Chief McMillan mentioned this, but we were just talking a little bit about the trends in the call volume, and I think we determined it's almost forty-three percent increase over the last six years. That's our calls, forty-three percent. Um, and the one thing I, I think is important to note too, is we've had that forty-three percent increase. And the last full-time staff we added was in twenty-eighteen with the SRO. We're trying to fill, we've added that part-time position, but we can't get any applicants to fill it. Um, so, you know, those are some things we're going to have to find some solutions for in the future if this keep, I mean, continues. Um, it's just, it just keeps going up and up, and, and there seems to be more of a reliance on law enforcement services, with a lot of things that they do. So I just wanted to point that out with some of that summary information, um, what we're seeing. And we're not really seeing it slow down, um, and I think it's pretty comparable to what other agencies are seeing as well, so.
Okay, if nothing more on the stat report, um, like, Sarah touched base on the applicants. I did extend the deadline and, for that part-time positions until January fifteenth. I have one application on my desk. Um, yep, it came in over, when, yes, sometime over the holiday. And there was an email I got from somebody interested in applying. They just didn't know where to send everything to, so I contacted them today. And so hopefully, we'll have two. Um, we'll see. Um, the one applicant we did get has zero experience, so it will take longer if we don't get anymore to train them, so. On December fourteenth, we had cocoa with a cop, Sheriff Heck, Officer Cody Pausch, and Officer Bart Kaufman, along with his daughter, um, and I, all had, we had seventeen kids attend. And a huge thank you to Foley Community Ed for helping us get that going and running it again this year. Um, February fifteenth, I have fun with police here at City Hall from four to six. Um, and then just some upcoming things for us. We have our use, our annual use of force training we do with the sheriff's office sometime in February. We're not sure on the exact dates yet. And then on January ninth, I have a records management meeting with the sheriff's office in our local cities to look at going with another evidence, or records management system, like I've discussed. And the other meetings, that the one we currently have is going to be obsolete. If, that is all I have, unless you have something for me.
Hour to squads.
We, the twenty-one had an oil change today. Everything was good. The nineteen goes in tomorrow, and we have noticed it does have an oil leak, so we'll have to see.
And our backup?
It's still good.
Anyone else have questions? Hearing none, thank you. City Engineer Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the last couple council meetings, we've kind of briefly touched on our, uh, capital water improvements. Um, and one of those, you know, with our PPL smittle, our IUP, um, with the, kind of, the, um, assignment, I guess, of, of the grant funding that the city was awarded based off of that, there was a, there was a, I, the IUP program. Um, we've kind of, we mentioned that we would come back with kind of the next steps moving forward. Um, we determined that the next steps moving forward will be to fine-tune our, uh, project estimate for the next year's round of, that, those smittles. Um, so your packet tonight, uh, is a proposal for a, the water treatment plant feasibility study. Um, tonight I have Jeff Ladine, one of our senior water engineers with us tonight. Um, and he's going to kind of go over that proposal with you and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. Thanks, sir. So I'm Jeff Ladine. Uh, twenty-some years ago, um, Foley came, reached out to us, um, in the Brainerd SEH office and was looking for a engineering firm to help them with, um, drinking water projects. Well four was going in at that time. We repainted the water tower, and so, Foley is an important client to me and to our drinking water group. That was back in the days where the office location was somewhat important, you know, pre-work-from-anywhere, um, and, which we do now. We, our, our drinking water group, I, I have responsibilities over several states and help support drinking water projects all over the place. But Foley and your water system is an important client history. And I don't think any of you were perhaps on the council when we first applied for the project priority list application for that water treatment plant in twenty eighteen or nineteen. Is that about right? Sarah and Mark were here. We came and we talked to the council, and, and at the time, you had to deal with your wastewater situation. That was going to be expensive, and then we talked about the, the drinking water. And at the time, knowing small-town council, a lot on your plate, um, it was, you, you did the right thing. You, you're, you're dealing with the wastewater thing first. But your drinking water, um, issue now is, uh, it's still not solved. We need to try to do something with the water quality. The manganese that's in your water is a health advisory limit to the state of Minnesota. And so, to their credit, they identified that issue. They, they matched the early cost estimate with a fifty percent grant award. And so that, I mean, two-point-six million dollars has been designated to try to help deal with the manganese issue in your drinking water. That's a big win, right? So we're trying to come up with a, an appropriate level of response to help you move forward and make some decisions, but still recognize that we're not going to start construction in two months on a multimillion-dollar water plant either, right? So that's the, the background, the buildup to what Jared mentioned of why we're trying to come and, and just freshen up the feasibility study, get a fresh cost estimate together. We're, we're proposing to bring the pilot trailer back and test, uh, treatment technology to deal with the organics that were found in the first, um, water treatment plant pilot study. And a- as a drinking water engineer, I kind of like this business. So if, if there's any of this that you want to ask me questions about, um, it's been a few years since I've been here. I'm happy to take questions and try to help explain more about what the strategy is. But if, once you have a water filtration plant to remove the manganese that's, and iron and manganese that's in that water, it greatly increases the water quality and then your ability to react to anything else that might come down the pike, a new, like, like, some cities are dealing with PFOS. You may have heard of that in the news. If you have a treatment plant, you can remove the PFOS. Your wells are distributed around town, and all that the other guys can do is just add some chemicals to that water, right? So they add the fluoride, the chlorine, a phosphate blend to sequester. But chemistry by addition, you know, is going to have a, you know, it's going to have an endpoint, right? You're not going to be able to do much. You're going to hit the wall with that water until you have a treatment plant to start removing some of the, the contaminants naturally occurring or, you know, such as they are. So that was the idea behind going out to well five, uh, out to, to, to the west and add a second well, and, and build a filtration plant out there. And then you'd have some filtered water, come to town. I think eventually it would replace, not immediately, but when, over time, you'd probably use the other wells less and just have filtered water, and things would be better in terms of water quality. Your citizens would have the benefit of better water quality, you know, less colored water problems and, and all those things. So as much as we know, our customers don't like to have to pay a little more for their water bill, at least if we're giving them some better water, we, we tend to get a little bit of forgiveness.
Mark, we're, we're at our limit, or we're getting close to our limit, and what we can do manually, is that correct?
I don't know how to answer that question properly. Um, we're doing what we can do, I mean.
Right.
Hey, you, you can't remove the discoloration in water without going to treatment.
Right.
So we can sequester it, but when we get a flow, that's when we're getting the brown water, I guess, of color.
Yep.
There's a, the sequestering, there, there's a, there's some, uh, a chemi- water treatment chemical you add, and it keeps, iron and manganese is, in, in groundwater is, uh, in two states, solid and, and dissolved. If you add the sequestering chemical, it'll stay in the dissolved form as it goes through the distribution system and pass on through, won't necessarily stain fixtures. But over time, that reaction breaks down, or if there's some oxidation that occurs, the dissolved iron will become a particle, or the dissolved manganese will become a particle, and then you'll have to deal with it. And, and, and that's what, when you start to see it, and you have the color problem, right? So it, the sequestering is just temporary to, to hopefully minimize, um, the problem, but that reaction breaks down in overtime. And so you, each year, you, you flush like heck i- in the spring to get all your mains clean. Um, you, you have enough supply quantity if you pump out of your wells so that you can keep the tanks full in, in the summer, and the tow, you know, fight a fire and, and, you know, quantity of wet water. But, um, it's a mixed bag as far as the manganese levels in those wells and some of the other quality problems. It wouldn't be cost-effective to add treatment at multiple locations. So, you know, well five location's probably the most cost-effective location to add a treatment facility. In our, in our proposal, there's, there's a mention made of maybe organizing a tour to look at some other nearby water treatment facilities. Um, those are really interesting, at least to water nerds, but, you know, I, I, we've taken, cut clients along and, you know, I think we can explain it to where you can kind of see the difference there's. You guys don't buy five or six million dollar water plants very often, right? So as to what you're getting for that kind of money, we can maybe show you some things that, you know, what, where some of the cost goes and, uh, find out what's right for your town. So I'd encourage you to think about, volunteer, if you can take a little time.
So Jared, what are you looking at from us tonight?
Uh, tonight, um, I believe there was an, an agreement also consent, uh, today, uh, as a, as something for you to consider tonight. Um, and if you're willing to kind of move forward this, this, uh, feasibility study, um, we were looking then for that to be, uh, approved tonight, the agreement for this feasibility study.
So based on that timeline up there?
Uh, correct, yep. Yep.
And then funding comes through where?
So, um, this is just the feasibility study to get us the information. We're still on the list. Maybe you want to elaborate more on what?
Yeah, so this is just to essentially update our construction and our project costs for the PPL and IUP smittle next round in May, June, kind of that, that timeframe.
Type of money, too, maybe?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, and I'll elaborate, you know, this is a project that would be funded through the enterprise, the water fund. So this would be, um, a result of what we charge in our monthly water sewer bills. So that the funding would be a combination of grant, loan, um, provided for by user, please.
So have we started any applications, so to speak, for grant?
We are on the list, yes.
Yeah, I mean, each year since two thousand eighteen, I think it was.
We're on a list.
We've, we've submitted a new one, but with, with the, the, the difference this go-around is that we have been assigned, um, some grant dollars in this last year, this last, last go-around. And so to take advantage of that, to kind of move forward. And so to take advantage of that, to kinda move forward, to show it, that state that we, this is something that C is interested in moving forward with. Um, we should update the, the plan is to update that, that cost estimate.
So there's a timeline in which we can use that or it's available or anything like that? I mean, how much time we got to work with?
I mean, I don't, Jeff, I, I don't think it's anything like.
As, you'll have enough time, I, I guess this is sort of an appropriate response to them making the commitment, so. By us doing this next level activity, you'll know more about what the total costs are. And we'll be able to let the state know that you're committed to the project and you're moving along, but you're not. Ready to award a contractor, do a full design yet, right? You're, we're, we'll iterate back and forth till you have a funding package that includes enough grants and some loans. That feels right, right, and, and right now it's been. Since, it's been several years since we've updated the cost estimate and it's time for you, you know, to, to react to the state's. Award of two point six million dollars by spending a little bit of your own funding. The, the project application that we did back then was to this. Project priority list. And so you, we've kept that up going every year. There may, we may uncover, and we'll keep looking, there may be another source of funding that. Seems right, um, I talked to Sarah a little bit about, um, talking to. Amber's office, right? Every now and then, our elected officials in Washington are, are looking for a nice public of, uh, infrastructure project. Political, politics aside, if they're gonna spend some money and, you know, our, I, Foley's probably a worthy place to use it as opposed to something silly, right, you know, so. And any other number of funding programs that are out there. It, it seems to vary as, as the years go by as to which program kinda wants to do something. The state may come back because of the manganese issue here, they, they may say, well, why don't you partner up with this other agency so we can get this one, you know, over the hump? We'll just keep our ear to the ground, talk to those folks who have funding and. Iterate through this process of estimating the cost without doing, we don't do a lot of design yet because you don't have a final funding package. But, you know, if you think about the trend year over year over year, costs only seem to go one way. You know, I don't see that changing. And I, I plan to work for a while, but, um, it's, you know, costs are gonna go up. It won't get better if we wait, um, but we, it, it's as good a time as it's been in quite a few years as far as. Outside sources of funding to help pay for infrastructure projects like this.
So Jared, with the testing, it hasn't been done since sixteen or is it done yearly?
The testing hasn't done since, since sixteen.
Alright.
That pilot study that was, that we did in two thousand, in two thousand sixteen, correct?
I don't know what more there is to talk about here than that, but to move ahead.
Did anyone see, Jeff or Gary, did you see the pilot trailer?
No.
I think it's.
And, and I'll elaborate to that, we just, we need to have better numbers.
Well, yeah, if the numbers change on what you're, what you're scoring on your testing of your water, that's gonna determine where you're gonna fall in that realm, isn't it?
Yeah.
We won't go down, right? Can we go down, I mean, can we go a worse number?
No, I don't think so, I mean.
You know what I'm saying, we can't get a, is it a lower or higher number or worse than that?
On the project priority list?
Yeah.
There, there could be a whole bunch of other projects that land, but, but your score probably isn't gonna change. You won't get less points.
Went down on the wastewater list, but it was only because other people scored higher. It kind of came in on us.
Your overall ranking because they added, the quantity went up.
Yep, but then you also, they also give you, like, sometimes you land on lists and then you carry over and they still keep you up on the list, so.
Well, I think it'd be good to get it tested just so that we know if it's something that's changing that we didn't know about.
Well, we just also too, I think, need more information from a financing perspective to what we're looking at because. We haven't had updated numbers for quite a few years, so we need to be prepared for that as well.
Need a motion? Looking for a motion to approve the feasibility study.
So moved.
Second, motion's being seconded, any further discussion?
Uh, one thing, Mr. Mayor, the grant money, will that? Pay for the feasibility study or does that come out of our pocket?
Um, the, the total dollar amount that we submitted to the PPL, like in that, that I think it was five point six million, whatever it was for the total project cost. That included a feasibility study at some, at some point. Um, now, we won't have this money to pay for this study, but it's a part of the project cost.
Okay.
Will this, will this come on the water fund, no?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
But I will say, identify it as the water treatment plant cost, right? Cause you, at the end of this whole funding program, this whole deal, there'll be kind of a closing day and you'll, you, you can show that as prior expended costs.
Probably get some of those costs back.
You. Well, or, or it can at least become some of, some programs say you have to spend a certain percentage of your own funds, right? So you wanna take credit for spending that, so.
Yeah, very similar to what we've done with the wastewater project, so, yep, we will have to concur and keep track of all that.
If you've afforded it, you don't wanna borrow it again, right, but, but take credit for it because some, some have a hard limit as to, you know, fifty percent grant total is the max or something like that.
Right. Alright, any further discussion on this? All four say aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, thank you, Jeff. It's Jeff, correct?
Yeah.
Alright.
Anything else, Jared?
Nope, uh, that is all I have tonight, so, uh, appreciate it, thank you, council.
Public Works, Fire, Mark Pampfus.
Hello, good evening. Not a lot on the public works side, we love the weather. Obviously very little snow falling. Probably the most we've been doing tree trimming and vehicle and building maintenance, and we'll continue with that. Uh, plenty to do yet, a lot of small stuff we normally don't do, we're getting done, so.
Is your UPI installed and working? Unir- uninterrupted power?
Yeah. Well, we haven't had to use it yet, but yeah, it kicked in today, first Tuesday, or every Tuesday. Uh, rinks, if we don't get some weather, we're not even gonna be worth spending the money, I mean, it's gonna run a by ya, I mean, we're kinda working out with staff level, but. You know, by February, there are, when the sun goes higher, they're already getting shot, so it's a lot of money to. I guess we can see what happens in the next, it's gonna cool down next week and snow a little bit, but. Just so you know on that, um, other than that, on the public works side, do you have any? Thing else? Questions, comments, or concerns?
Compost, somebody said it, that the, the schedules were interrupted somewhat, we, they still run on the same Tuesday?
We have it open now all this week through, um, what'd we say, next Tuesday or something like that. We're gonna make sure it's open every day for Christmas trees and stuff, yeah. They pushed it out on, uh, wherever, social media stuff, so hopefully get the word out there. I haven't seen much for trees out there yet, they've been working out there a lot, even last week. Uh, design was on the lift station and I haven't seen much activity there, so. Uh, anything else, Public Works? One thing just in, I'll get thrown out is with the decorations, you know, we put the ones on the roundabout, granted half and don't work because the outlets aren't working right. But we should, if we can find a few thousand dollars this year to buy a few more, they look nice on the highway, the ones that are lit up, I mean, that's. But we should probably do that in a couple of months here because they're a lot cheaper, I don't know if we can just, you know, get a few more. Each year or something, but we did the polls and we'll come back with that because that's not tonight's topic. Any more Public Works? No, great, Fire, uh, Santa parade was real successful again, we had a good turnout of people, we had good weather, uh, good comments, so. Covered the whole town in a few hours, we broke up into multiple Santas, that went very well. Um, then very busy on the Fire side, we had thirty-two calls in December, so five, actually five were, uh. Working fires, two were mutual aid, and we had two fires in late November, so that's about seven and, uh. Bunch of accidents, I think we had five accidents in December, so. Uh, that's been very busy and the other one is tanker three replacement in your packet tonight. We sent the spec stuff out, we've been, we started a committee, you guys authorized earlier this year. We actually have been gathering some information ahead of time prior to that. Pretty basic truck that we have proposed here, um, and then we've run it by our group a couple different times now. And, uh, the membership's happy with it, we're gonna get in tomorrow night, but there's. No one changed since last time, it's a slide out tray, so. I guess I'd like questions on that or comments and anybody having questions on the specs that are in there? Have it in the, in the notes, it's the ninety-nine, the freightliner will be the one getting replaced, it'll, uh, it's got a steel. Stainless tank with a steel body, so it's been already redone, the body's been redone once and it's starting to rust again.
Anyone have any questions for him on that? Will you be, will you be able to sell the ninety-nine?
Yeah, we're gonna have to come up with an option. That truck pulls the Bombardier. And we're gonna, we're putting a hitch on this truck, but we'd rather put it on the other truck. But the other one has a much smaller motor, so we're gonna have a little bit of time maybe when we first get it of keeping, till we figure out what we're really doing there. We have a Bombardier for grass fires.
Do you have an idea of what the ninety-nine will sell for?
No, I have no, I'm not even gonna, it should be worth something yet, yes. And I gotta, you know, we should be kinda caught up on trucks now, we have that Bombardier, if we ever found a used one, a two seater, we would come back to you with that. But otherwise, you know, the trucks now, all the bigger ones. Are replaced since oh two, they've all been updated then. And, uh, that truck has a ways to go yet, it's a good truck yet, doesn't get a lot of use. We're gonna have to look at a fire hall roof, we walked around water, Christmas Day, or whatever that was. Every time we came in and, uh, inside and, uh, so I wanna at least mention, we have these in the parking lot, we're gonna have to look at someday. Out there, so just so we know, we do have other expenses, not this big coming up, I just don't wanna.
Say the roof is more priority than the parking lot?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna try, I like saying that we found out late this fall, we finally found where some stuff is leaking, but it's gonna have to open up. It's maybe, that's thirty-two years old now? Maybe it's time we re-roof it and bite the bullet and before everything is, you know, wet and rotten up there, so. I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware, there are some other things besides, you know, the big trucks should be covered. We shouldn't, besides that Bombardier, where we're at, you know, someone doesn't say we didn't know that. What we would do if we go with this truck, and I just got this this afternoon, Sarah and Ashley, the price was three hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars. It's ten thousand dollars down, they'll make up a purchase contract, we have to have ten thousand dollars to a down payment on the purchase contract. When the chassis comes in in early twenty twenty-five, about a year from now, we'll have to pay for the chassis, very similar to what we've done in the last several trucks. That's gonna be about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand minus the ten, so I'll say a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then on the delivery of the truck, which would be late twenty twenty-five, just under two years, we would have the balance too, the last two seventy-five or whatever. They do disclose in here, there could be an adjustment in price of chassis, a freightliner ups the price, you know, because we would, we'll actually get a year newer model. There could be a price adjustment on the freightliner chassis. And that's only what freightliner, there's no control, you know, to Midwest Fire that. That's, I think a doable number with what the information Sarah provided today, you know, we have a year to come up with it, we have. And it'd be one twenty-five and then the last bigger number, two years from now.
I don't have any numbers in front of me, so I don't know how much we have to spend.
Um, I can, I can go for that, um, so we have about eight hundred and thirty in the cash for Fire. And, um.
Eight hundred and thirty thousand?
Eight hundred and thirty thousand, yep, yep, sorry, not eight hundred and thirty dollars.
I don't know. That's how everyone lives nowadays.
Most of it's fairly liquid, um, except for about a hundred and sixty-five are kinda tied up in some investments that'd be tougher to get at. Um, so, you know, and that, that's right now, end of the year, or actually at December thirty-first is kinda how we figured it. Um, so, you know, that balance obviously will change over the course of the next year and a half. So, I mean, there was, um, when I got this late, before the packet, that's why I didn't have a lot of information in the packet because, um, I had taken off a day and it just came in when the packet was done, so. I didn't get a whole lot of time to look at it, but. There was a request about seeing if we could do another loan, we did a loan from another fund. I do have some concerns with that just based on some of the other projects that we have going. You know, using that expendable trust or using, tying up other money for this fire truck, I, I just think we need to try to keep that within the fund and keep some of those funds available. If we need them for other housing projects or others, you know, some of activities that we have going on. Because sometimes we can be limited on what we can use and we only have so much kind of rainy day funds available to us. So that, that, I guess you're looking at about eight hundred and thirty thousand now, um, you know. You're spending that, you would levy some of it back, it'd take a few years though.
When do you need to have the go ahead, Mark?
Well, it'd be nice to now, to get it, you know, just keeps pushing the production date back.
Okay.
I believe we have one year of payments, I think it's only one, uh, we're, we're, we borrowed the rescue truck, five payments out of the federal trust, and I think it's one payment. We have that in the budget, it's a line item.
It's one or two, yeah.
It, there's a line item of sixty thousand.
It might be, it might be twenty-four too.
Yeah, it's twenty-four yet.
Yeah.
Yes, if we didn't do it, we have this year's payment and that's why it worked out.
When do we buy it?
Then we would start the rescue, the tanker truck after that payment is done, I believe.
After the rescue.
The rescue will be paid in twenty-four, the first payment for this will be in twenty-five.
So we bought that in, we bought that in two thousand twenty for six hundred and sixty-three thousand, so.
Yeah, we borrowed three hundred.
Okay.
If I remember right, I was gonna pull it and I never did today. But that'll be paid off prior to the arrival or payments on this truck.
Are you more comfortable, Sarah, if we wait a month or if we have another meeting in two weeks or a month from now and then decide on this?
Well, I, you know, all I'm gonna say is I just, I haven't, and I just got the contract today, so I haven't had the attorney, not that I think there's anything wrong, we've done these similar contracts with it. It's really gonna be up to your comfort level, you know, on what you're willing to spend, I just don't, I just don't know if I can find. This much other funds elsewhere, I don't think that's in our best interest right now, I think it should stay in the fire cash.
We don't have a promise named in the fire fund, we have the money there and that's why we put this money on.
Oh, you have money in the fire fund?
Yeah, that's the eight hundred and thirty thousand.
We could buy two trucks.
Yeah.
No, we have all these other expenses.
I, but, I understand that, but she said this was a liquid cash then after she'd said that, so I thought.
Oh, so what I mean by that.
We were pulling out of Peter to pay Paul here or something.
Well, that's what we did last time because they didn't wanna spend fire cash, we, they, they wanted to preserve some of that fire cash. This time I'm saying I'm not, I don't think it's in our best interest to do a loan from another fund for this purchase.
If we can afford it, or if the fire fund can afford it, I don't see a problem.
The only thing I can't say for certain is, is we had talked about there's other funds or other needs that are happening. I just, you know, the only thing I would just say is we gotta make sure we have enough, if they need two hundred or three hundred thousand a year or two for other repairs to the building. We gotta find that money somewhere in the fire fund then, you know, that's gonna have to be dealt with. If that, if the roof, roof is leaking, we have to figure that out as well, so. You just have less room to work with, I don't, I'm not a good gauge at what those, those repairs are gonna cost, that's.
Well, I don't know how the other rest of the council feels, I'd be comfortable waiting one month and let's think about this because this is just getting thrown on us right now. Other than the cost of the truck. I don't know what anyone else feels about it.
You're talking the roof and the tar? You're talking the whole project out there?
No, no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Everything that we're getting thrown on, you're talking the truck, the roof?
Right.
Okay.
That's what, yes.
Okay, okay.
But.
Right now, we're only considering the truck.
No, and I think.
We gotta do the roof and we gotta, at some, we, we, we're gonna do the, we were gonna do the parking lot last year and we let it go.
Well, the parking lot's first up because they're not gonna go on board. The roof is important, the truck is important.
Yes, sir, mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
One month is gonna change it?
No, I just, I'm just making sure the council's comfortable with, with this.
Cause with fire hall, parking lot, we might be looking at fifty thousand now, roof, and if you have a hundred, you're still gonna look at having, by then, you know, with what we put in every year.
We should buy something by the time we pay for this.
You should have five hundred thousand left in your fund. You know, when we're done with this. So.
Any further discussion on this then, or do we entertain a motion? Any further discussion on this then, or do we entertain a motion?
I, I guess, um, the poly tank, that's the way things are going now.
Man.
It's poly tank and body, they are now, pretty much.
Okay. Longevity on this truck?
Um.
Thirty years?
Yeah, twenty-five to thirty on the tractor.
Was the ninety-nine used twenty-five or no? No. No?
But it's a steel body.
So we got like twenty-four out of that? Alright.
I'd entertain a motion to approve or to order or whatever the verbiage is for the new truck.
I entertain that motion that we purchased, uh, go ahead with the purchase of this, uh, three thousand gallon tanker.
I, I don't know, they don't have the contract, so, like, you're gonna, you explain that, you just, I just got the contract today, Mark, so.
When they do discuss it, I just got it, yeah.
Yeah.
It won't give.
He, uh, ask first.
If we approve this contract, which you don't get a contract till you guys say, fill out a contract, so that's why we have to come here. Can we have the ten thousand dollar payment or do we have to wait for next February's checks to, to add it to the bills list? To get it in line?
So you wanna amend the motion?
That's why I'm asking, you know.
Well, the motion tonight was for, to approve the, whether to approve the entire purchase of the truck or the ten thousand dollar con- down payment.
Purchase of the truck.
If you purchase the truck, you sign the contract, you're in for the four hundred thousand. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna put the ten down, but I mean, you're, you're committing to that truck. You're making a four hundred thousand dollar decision tonight. But what he's saying is he wants, the contract you don't have that, that just, we just got, requires a ten thousand dollar payment in ten business days.
And if that's a make or break deal, I'm sure we can talk to them about it.
So the other part of your question was to add the ten thousand dollars to January's expenses?
Yeah, we've already done January bills, so they can't cut a check in this. And I say if that's a issue, we'll tell them you can't have it till February. At least get our spot, you know, in line, and then, uh.
What's that, ten thousand dollars gonna be a big deal?
Well, apparently to the people you're buying it from.
Well, if we want a contract, don't we have to make a ten thousand dollar contract payment?
It's part of your purchase price. It'll come off the three ninety-seven. So you just want commitment that you're gonna stay.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any further discussion?
Okay, so, what we're voting on here is this contract?
You don't have the contract.
We don't have.
I just got the contract, like, right before my review today.
This is not even for sure the con, like, actual con, I mean, it's a sample contract.
We don't have a contract.
So we're just voting on considering.
No, he's asking you to approve a contract too.
We're approving, we're approving the purchase of this truck.
Approving, allowing me to get a contract for the city to sign, because they'd have to come back for cities, you know, Sarah to sign there.
Okay.
It's a source of all contracts, so.
Okay.
So I know.
But do we have to have a motion to approve the ten thousand dollar down payment?
You need a motion to approve the whole thing with the ten thousand dollars. This is a capital expenditure.
That's what we did. That's we approved, or that was the motion.
Okay, so that's included.
But you also need to, council also needs to authorize any contract, so that will also need to come back.
Yeah, once, once, this is all taken care of.
Yep.
We have to correct.
I would be curious to know if you can, over the course of the next month, find out what's, what that old tanker possibly could sell for. It'd just be good to know what, what we might get out of it, if anything.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Motion's made and seconded. All four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Thank you. Other than that, I don't think I have any.
Did we get the new Tahoe in service yet?
Tahoe's in service. It doesn't get lettered, striped till next Wednesday. Um, we haven't, we gotta redo some pictures and whatever, we stripped the other one, so we're gonna do that tomorrow night to, we haven't sold it yet, so. That'll be another month or whatever before the old one goes away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administration, Sarah Braun.
Okay, um, I am going to just forego my report right now. I need to be at the township meeting on behalf of the city in five minutes, so. Um, I will let the other department heads finish up the meeting, and if I have anything, I will email the council, but I don't really have anything action item, so.
Okay. Any old business? Any new business? Anyone to speak on the second forum?
Hi, I'm Deborah Olson at six hundred. I hope everybody got the email that I sent out requesting to have the, um, listing of receive, monies receivables. All night, we've heard how the city has no money. It'd be nice, any household does this, you have your receivables, to look at your billables. Uh, even as citizens, we'd like to see receivables for the billables. And, um, it, I don't think it's too much to ask. Sarah mentioned that she, we follow the guidelines of the League of Minnesota. That's, the key word is guideline, so it's still up to the city to say, yes, we can see the receivables. Um, and also.
Yep.
I wanted to, for next month, if you could let us know what this talk with the town, the state farm has been going. I know she's going to, uh, Gilmore Town Township meeting, but it kinda, that's farming agriculture. And so if we're gonna try to get a developer zeroing in on that, that's going against what the planning commissions to keep, maintain and keep our agriculture. We have other parcels that aren't being developed, you know, steering developers towards those areas instead of a farm. I understand that's in fully city limits versus Gilmore Township. And then when we look at the housing development, I did ask if she did delineate the different types of housing. There is one developer that's already has an established, um, senior housing living situation in Wade Park. They're labeling it as senior condo living with amenities. But if you read through their contract, all it is is a glorified time shift. They don't have actual ownership, so please be cognizant of different developers. You know, we still coming towards the tail end of the moratorium on long-term care beds. That's why you're seeing the shift in assisted living. They're based on a different rating scale and they take, uh, what should be in a long-term care facility, only because they can charge more. So when you look at all these different developments that are coming through, please be aware of some of those situations. They aren't as good as they really seem. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question for Jared? I'm sorry, or?
My other question is, it's not just for Jared. Um, it has to do with the notification of the significant abnormal findings in our water testing. Our last notification to the residents was not in a timely fashion and did not do this from the health consequences related to those elevated levels. So that's what needs to be addressed also.
Thank you. Uh, I was supposed to read this. Prior to public meeting, the city council held a closed session to conduct a performance review of the city administrator, which is allowed per Minnesota statutes thirteen D. Point oh-five subdivision three. The summary of this meeting was, is that the performance of the city manager, city administrator was deemed satisfactory. Anyone else for open forum? I just wanna thank, uh, the fire department on Christmas night. Uh, there was the power arcing, uh, taking place and so was, I mean, I think they were out there for many hours, um, blocking off traffic and standing in the rain. Uh, so, thank you for, uh, doing that and putting all the time in on Christmas night, because there was, there were a handful of you there, so.
You're welcome. Thank you for saying that, I don't know.
I have another compliment for you, Mark. A gentleman who walks in, his dog in the middle of the night, you know, you cleaned the crick that goes be, on that lot between Brenney and the fire department and under the road, under Norman, and you were cleaning that crick on one day during the week. And we, the two of us couldn't help but notice, we had whitewater on Christmas night going down, and we sat there and listened to it and watched it. So, and, and he said, if you ever talked to the police chief, could you let him know? I really liked it. I said, good.
Okay, thank you.
On behalf of the city and the, uh, city council, I wanna thank you guys for the great job you did on a Santa parade. That was the second or third annual, I think.
Fourth.
Fourth. And I hope you guys continue. I heard, uh, a lot, a lot of good, uh, comments.
Very well.
Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the estate of Robin Gondik, my brother, I'd like to, uh, thank you for, uh, your sincere sympathy during his passing.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. All four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.